Call to order the May meeting of the Moll-Mell Planning Commission. Uh, Mr. Grummer, do we have any announcements?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chair. So, um, the, uh, on the agenda, we've got, uh, a few items that have changed up. Item number four, uh, has been, uh, was withdrawn from the agenda earlier this month, so that was crossed out. And then items five and six, the Isabel Court, uh, have requested a deferral until June. Uh, there's an attached email to, um, the, uh, uh, to the notes that I sent you, uh, from the applicant. Uh, so there are some motions, uh, in order for those deferrals which are listed, uh, on those items. That's all I've got.
Mr. Grummer, we will now move on to approval of the minutes. We all have a copy of the April minutes. Does anybody have any corrections to be made to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion to second any discussion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Minutes are approved. I have no public comments on non-agenda items, so I will open the public hearing. Without old business, we'll move into new business. And, uh, due to a conflict, I will hand over the meeting to the Vice Chair for items number one and two.
What is that on? What time?
One and two.
Okay. Item one, request for approval of the proposed preliminary development plan of Country Club of Arkansas Phase 24C. So, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, this, uh, this is the preliminary development plan for the third phase of Phase 24, uh, in the Country Club of Arkansas. You'll find that the, uh, the project is at the very end of this development area next to the wetlands. A packet was provided with checklist. The, um, staff comments, uh, on this project, um, you'll find that, uh, we had comments on setbacks. The applicant, uh, on lots that are bordering the wetlands had a 15-foot setback versus other lots that had a 25-foot setback. Um, so there was inconsistency with the other phases of the development. So staff recommendation was consistency on the setbacks, but after, um, sending this out, the, uh, applicant, uh, and staff talked, uh, they mentioned that on the lots that are bordering the, uh, the wetlands, um, with the 15-foot setbacks, uh, those are going to be side-loading garages versus front-loading garages. Uh, the width of the lots are such that it minimizes the amount of usage of the rear yard. Um, so with the, uh, side-loading garages, kind of change the, it changes the overall, um, fill of those houses fronting the street. So, uh, they offered to change, um, all the lots that are bordering the wetland, uh, the 25-foot ones, change those to 15 so that all those lots are consistent all the way down the roadway. Um, and staff was okay with that. And then, uh, yep, so that'd be, uh, lots 1790 to 1801, uh, they would take from 25 feet to 15 feet. So I'll leave that open for discussion. Uh, the other lot, uh, the other, uh, comment, lots 1795 through 1796 was mislabeled as 200 and 201, um, and they have, uh, they noted that, uh, to be corrected, as well as, uh, the FEMA documentation for the floodplain development that needs to be provided. Uh, there are some additional comments on the checklist that I provided you that came in after the packet went out. Number four, uh, to add a plat note that all tracks to be used for utility drainage and common space. Um, and then, number five, to move, uh, you'll find there's a sidewalk, um, that was part of our, uh, initial comments, uh, that's bordering lot 1790 and 1791. Uh, we requested that, that sidewalk that is on, uh, Corona Delay to be moved to the south part of the street to border lot 1840, so there's not a mid-block crosswalk. Uh, that way, uh, the sidewalk would continue across 1840, and then the crosswalk would actually be on Milligan, and it wouldn't be mid-block. So that was a staff recommended, which, uh, the applicant, uh, was, uh, was happy to do that. Um, and then, number six, add a minimum of 25-foot access easement, uh, between lots 1811 and 1812 to the adjacent land to the east. This was discussed in the subcommittee meeting where, uh, they're, uh, the owner of this development has some leftover land to the east of the property. Most of it is undeveloped. It is in, um, there's, uh, in floodplain, but, uh, there is a small portion that possibly could be. They said that they, uh, do intend on using the land, uh, for wetland mitigation credits later on, but, uh, staff recommended until such future time that a deed restriction is placed on that land, there needs to at least be access to it, so it's not cut off, um, and it provides access. So, our recommendation was to have an access easement between, uh, lot 1811 and 1812 to access that property. Uh, if they are able to get, uh, that deed restriction or, uh, get that determined for mitigation and not to be developed in the future, then they can remove that access easement, uh, at final plating. So they, they certainly have time to get that done. And, uh, staff recommendation is a due pass recommendation to City Council, uh, contingent on meeting all staff, Planning Commission, and City Engineering comments, uh, and submit all the FEMA required documents prior to development. And that concludes my comments.
We do have one comment card. Tom, you're right. Okay. I do have a question. You stated, uh, for the 15-foot setback, they have side-loading garages. Does it state anywhere?
They did say that if we preferred to have a, a general note on the plat, uh, that all those lots would be side-loading, that they, uh, uh, would be, uh, willing to consider that, but the, uh, the applicant probably want to speak to that. But there's not a note on the plat of that right now. No, sir?
I don't ever recall us stating or limiting the type of home. And I don't even, I don't think we can govern that.
And I'm not necessarily...
Even if the plat note goes on, I don't think that we could govern that. I really don't.
And it's more of a recommendation. The, the other phases all had 25-foot setbacks. Uh, they were consistent throughout the entire neighborhood. They are getting to the end of the development, so they don't see a lot of traffic. Um, so we're just trying to, uh, we're recommending consistency, but since this is a PRD, it's not regulated with the strict code as R1 or whatnot, so they do have the flexibility to, uh...
Change it?
Well, to, uh, recommend what setbacks that they're wanting. Doesn't have to follow the standard R1 25-foot. So, merely a recommendation.
What's the, what's the, did the applicant share with you what the decision driver was about the difference, about why they want to make the change? You might have covered that, Eric, in the subcommittee meeting. I just don't remember.
And he can certainly speak to it.
Yeah, I don't know. Or whoever knows the answer to the question?
He could probably speak to it better than I could.
Okay.
Eric Colaway, 116 Timberland Trail. Uh, one of the big things is, especially with the, the subdivision to the south that I know a little bit about, um, now that we're up against the wetland, we got a lot of fill that we got to place in there, so we're trying to keep the lots as shallow as we can, have as less impact on the, the wetlands. We were up against the floodway in a couple areas there, so that also limits our ability to, to push out. So, because they're going so wide with the lots, they're going to try to push to the value that we've been able to get, uh, in that subdivision to the south. And to do that, most of the people that are going to go into that are going to have fairly big footprints. They're going to be, most of them wanting pools or, or backyards that are more usable, so we're just trying to push forward. So, 'cause I, I can tell you with my own house, I did do a pool in my house, and I had about, I have a 135-foot deep lot and a 25-foot setback, and I had about 17 feet left for, for an actual pool in my backyard. So I think, I think that this will be some help to give people the, the ability to have more space to, to put in that kind of amenity with those lots.
Any other questions or comments on the preliminary development plan?
Is there, you're going to just be able to reduce the amount of fill in there, too, brother?
Yes.
So the, is the, um, I guess it's you, Scott, is that I, I don't, don't think that we can govern this, or I guess this is for you, Madam City Attorney. Is there any way you can govern the type of permitted home that goes on the lot? If it's there by right and it's within the designated...
So State Ball says we don't govern layout of houses, um, as long as the, they're in compliance with the building code. Now, there may be a bill of assurance or something like that that would create some civil liability or responsibility...
We don't govern that either.
But we don't enforce that.
And I would remind to turn your mic on when you speak.
Any other discussion? Questions?
The whole, the, the setback that's shown on the plat that's, was in my packet, is 25 the whole way, is not, or is it, where does it change step into 15?
So you'll, if you look on the, uh, on the development plan, um, at lot, yeah, 1801, uh, across to 1802, it steps down.
I see now. Thank you, Pam. I see now.
But, uh, they did mention that they'd be willing to take, uh, those lots that are 25 feet, uh, to 15 feet. Again, uh, whether if it stays 25 or 15, there was a recommendation, but, uh, staff is, uh, not going to, I mean, being that it's a PRD, if they feel like it's in the best interest of the development, um, the PRD code gives the flexibility for that.
And you're okay with 15 being in that 1802 through the, I guess it goes all the way, carries all the way through?
1813 is where it stops.
At mid-lot.
I believe, uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Eric, that, um, you had agreed to change the other ones that were 25 down to 15. Uh, and I think that would create a little bit more consistency to make sure that you don't have, unless, some of the, sometimes in these subdivisions, they don't always pull up to the building line. They set back regardless. Um, so you may have some varying degrees of setbacks from the buildings. But, uh, there are instances where, uh, if you don't keep that consistent on the street on one side, it can throw some things off, so, uh, staff is fine with it going 15 all the way, as long as it's consistent. Um, that's our recommendation. And he's agreed to do that.
Don't we typically hear the plat before the development plan, or am I... or am I subversal?
Well, so the, um, and I guess we could do the plat before the development plan, but, uh, typically it's, I mean, it's whatever is preferential.
Understood, okay. All done, new trace.
If, if the development plan is, is denied, then there's no reason to run the plat, but it's hard to run a plat, um, if there's questions on what the actual site plan shows on the development plan, which on residential, you don't really show the buildings, so it's a little different than a commercial.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no other questions, I make a motion for a due pass to the City Council for the proposed preliminary development plan of Country Club of Arkansas, Phase 24C, uh, contingent on staff, engineering, and any planning commission comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, uh, for the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Item number two is the, uh, request for approval of the proposed preliminary plat of the Country Club of Arkansas Phase 24C.
All righty, uh, Mr. Vice Chair, uh, again, uh, I provided you an updated, uh, preliminary plat checklist that just has a few items that came, uh, about after the packet went out that were found that we wished, uh, we wanted to be addressed. Same comments are pretty much the same from the development plan, with the exception on, uh, number six, well, that deals with the building setbacks. Again, uh, based on the conversation during the development plan, uh, staff is okay with, uh, the movement of, uh, a consistent 15-foot setback along Corona Delay on those houses that are back into the wetland. They've, uh, number two on the lots, mislabeled, 200 and 201, uh, those are being fixed. And then, um, the applicant proposes converting, uh, the Phase 24B detention to residential lots and combining, uh, in detention requirements for Phase 24B with Phase 24C requirements. Of course, that's going to require, uh, civil plan review and approval by the city engineer to make sure that can be done. So, uh, the preliminary, uh, plat will be contingent upon, uh, the civil plan review and, and approval, uh, for that to happen. And then, uh, number, uh, four, the 20 floodplain analysis shall be submitted as part of the preliminary plat filing, when portions of land to be developed is flood-prone. And then, um, number 30, just, uh, getting copies of the, um, the stormwater, um, plan prior to preliminary plat approval. Staff recommends approval contingent on meeting all staff, planning commissioner, and city engineering comments, and submit all the FEMA required documents prior to development.
What about this, the access easement between 812 and 811, which is on the preliminary development plan, is applicable here as well?
Uh, yes, those, I'm sorry, those same comments apply to the plat, which would have to be shown on the plat. Thank you.
Kurt, can I ask you a question? So, this, this property to the east on Cypress Bay, it's, it's Tommy's as well, too?
Yes, sir.
So, you're just going to go at the core on this little wetland mitigation site on the permit? So, you would still have the same, uh, ease or access cut off? I mean, if this comes up, you still have a, a portion of land that's between the floodplain and the plat line that wouldn't, that would be cut off? All right? Or am I looking that wrong?
Well, it's, I mean, I guess the definition of cutoff would be, i-if you're talking about in this subdivision or on the...
Well, I'm trying to figure out...
The, the open space of this subdivision, to me, could be accessed up near the lake 'cause it's, to open to that full track. There's actually two places where we have it open to that, to where it could be accessed to be maintained, or, or if there was some kind of problem with a tree falling down or something like that, that somebody had to go out and deal with. So I do think that access is there. There's, I think, I don't have those lights in front of me, but there's, there's two breaks in the, in the run there where we're taking drainage back to that lake, where that also is an access area as well.
So, is, is that, what's the, 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 to the preliminary development plan, Scott, is this access easement, um, it's to a mitigation site? So help me understand the, the driver there to put that in, or to keep it in, your, your request.
It's just, just to make sure that, I mean, if they ever wanted to, uh, develop that for any reason, uh, having some sort of access to it would be required, but, um...
To, to speak on behalf of, of the owner, uh, we would prefer not to have easement, and I, and after talking to the, the city's wetland, uh, Jimmy Mack, that's done all the work, the contractor that we, the, the city's hired to do, we'd better not to have that access, 'cause you're basically ending any...
We'll cover that on time. We'll just cover it on time.
Sure.
I think that's probably, that's why Scott suggested, so it's not beat it up.
We're, we're comfortable with that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Make a motion to Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair, entertain a motion for the approval of the preliminary plat of the Country Club of Arkansas, Phase 24C, pending any other of the commissioner's staff comments.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor for the motion, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. Return, control back over. Thank you, Vice Chair. Andrews, we'll move on to item number three, the proposed preliminary plat of the Piper Edition. Mr. Grummer, staff report?
So this lot is located in the Commercial Park area, uh, off of Commerce Drive and Commercial Park Drive. Uh, previously, in the previous month, the, uh, Planning Commission approved and City Council approved a, a change of, uh, a rezoning of the land to the, um, to the east of it, to, uh, PRD. Uh, this land is to the north of Commercial Park Drive, and, uh, they requested, they actually had a site plan and a preliminary plat, but they pulled the site plan to build, uh, provide a little bit more work on it before they submit it. Uh, but they are wanting to move forward with the preliminary plat. I provided a updated checklist in front of you that has one added item. Uh, item number one, eight and 12, the preliminary plat approval is contingent on city engineer review and approval of the civil, uh, plan design. Uh, number two, number 30 needed, uh, prior to approval of civil plans, which is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. Uh, number three, the, one of the things that the applicant had agreed to do was to, um, provide the necessary right-of-way dedication, uh, to final, to finish the dedication of Commercial Park Drive to the city of Moll-Mell. So, uh, the preliminary plat is, uh, should be contingent upon, uh, the correct right-of-way dedication being delineated on the plat and shown on the, uh, and shown on the preliminary plat. It's not that way right now, so they've agreed to add it. That way, once, if, uh, once it's approved, it can go to City Council to have, uh, that, uh, the proper ordinance run. Right, staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat contingent on meeting all staff, city engineer, and commissioner comments.
Thank you, Mr. Grummer. Any questions, comments, direct to staff? Is the right-of-way line that's shown correct? Or are we getting additional?
Well, so the, uh, the right-of-way line on the actual plat, um, for this, uh, this lot, uh, I'm assuming is shown correctly. What we need is the other side, um, shown so that you can actually see the, uh, the actual, uh, where the, almost as if it's its own lot, per se. It should have, I like to see the right-of-way that's being dedicated, uh, as the lot lines are shown on the plat, so you can see that it's actually owner, ownership and being moved over to right-of-way.
Anything further, staff?
Just, just budding up to the industrial side here, there's only 15-foot building setback of Corona, huh?
On the, I'm sorry.
On the north side, or I guess it's the east side, excuse me, north to the left. So, east side, that is just, that is the, 15-foot building setback is all that is required. That, that's industrial, right? In the east, there's a 10-foot drainage and utility easement, and then underneath that, it has a 15-foot building setback?
There'll be, the, there's a necessary buffer for that.
Thought they had a 50-foot landscape buffer, but the setback may not be. That's why I'm just calling it the question.
Jason, you want to...
So for a C, this is on C3 currently, so a C3 on a rear setback, which is, in this case, would be the eastern edge, is a 15... Is a 15-foot, it is a 15-foot rear setback.
The box now, oh, I'm trying to have one.
Okay. Sorry. All right, sorry. So at a C3 zone, the rear setback is 15 feet, which is in this case. Uh, the 50-foot comes into play when it's an industrial abutting up to a residential. So an industrial has to have the 50-foot, so not the residential side of it. So it talks about rear, rear yard, there shall be a rear yards having no more, a depth of not less than 15 feet, except when abutting a residential area, the rear yards shall not be less than 25 feet in that case. So in this case, it is, this is commercial, and it's not, there's no residential that it's abutting up to on that side.
What's the plan development?
Uh, there's nothing, nothing presented. The site plan originally was a multifamily, but there's, there's nothing presented since it's still C3, and it's not C2. C2 has not been sought yet.
Thanks, Jason.
Anything else, staff? Anything to the applicant's representative? Anyone have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the proposed preliminary plat, Piper Edition, contingent on following staff, engineering, and planning commission comments.
You have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? All right, Mr. Chair. Uh, Mr. Grummer, I understand that item number four has been withdrawn and requires no action process, is it?
Yes, sir. Correct.
Before we need to deal with these one by one, and items, item number five is requesting a deferral, which does require, would that be a motion to table?
Yes, sir.
Uh, staff have any, uh, commentary on the request to defer?
Uh, staff recommends defer, um, the site plan for Isabel's Court to June.
Are we recommending that, staff recommending that, or did it come from the applicant?
Came from the applicant. There's an email attached to, uh, the, to the amended, uh, checklist. On the very back, you'll see the, uh, email from the client.
Okay, that's...
From the applicant.
I think if we defer, we require action. But if the applicant, there's none, right?
Well, it's...
It's...
Madam City Attorney, commentary, Mr. Chair.
I don't remember which way, that's why I'm asking, but...
I'm, I'm sorry, that if you were, if they are, we have to take action, or...
No, it only, if, if, if the staff recommends deferral, we take action. If, 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 if deferral is recommended by the applicant, it's automatically deferred.
Okay.
That's the way I remember it. But I'm not an attorney.
Well, that's...
As most of you will know.
I, there was, I didn't have clarif, I couldn't find the clarity on that in the, in the ordinance, so I just added it in. But basically, they requested the deferral, so we automatically pull them, um, almost like a withdrawal.
If I remember all, in the past, all the deferrals requested by the applicant.
Yeah, I, I remember that way too much.
We, we don't have to do anything.
Okay.
Is there, is there, um, Mr. Grummer, we're Madam City Attorney, is there any difference as far as anything, any notice requirements or submissions if they, if we table versus their withdrawal?
Either way, they're going to have to come back and, and do the proper notification.
But it doesn't slow it down, that they can't submit for next month?
Well, they can submit. Now, I don't know if, if, uh, that's a good question. I can, uh, check on that and, uh, but I would think that, uh, going to the next month, um...
So, I think we have, there's not as much notification requirements on site plan as there would be, like, on rezoning.
No, so the, on the, uh, on the site plan, all it is, is just, it's a legal notice, it's put into the, uh, into the paper. There's no, uh, certi-certified mailings or, uh, signed postings, but on the variance, um, there is, uh, signed posting. And then there's legal notice, but no certified letters. So there's, uh, on both, there would be a legal notice in the paper that'd be required. My recommendation is that we just do it, just to, to be safe, but I'm assuming if you make the motion here, that that motion carries as a public notification, there'll be another meeting next month on this, this item. So, um, again, I don't, when we look in the ordinance, it doesn't really give specifics on how that's run, but I can find out, and we'll get with the, with the applicant, and make sure it's, it's met properly. met properly.
Well, it certainly seems to me as if the owner is wishing to withdraw these two submittals, and unless I have an objection, I'm just going to consider these withdrawn and therefore not on our agenda. So there's nothing considered. Do I have any objections?
Nope.
No, sir.
No.
I believe that takes care of items five through seven. I'll now close the public hearing, and we'll move on to liaison reports made the third by Chair Andrews.
Had the third reading on ordinance 1028 for amending the zoning map from C3 to C2, and that passed. The, for what it's worth, the motion on short-term rental failed. The, for new business, they had the first reading of 1033. That was an ordinance amending the current land use plan for Carnahan and Club Manor. And then, same thing for 1034 for the zoning map, just readings. And then, there was a motion for approval of the preliminary development plan for the Harris addition, and that did pass. That was it.
Thank you, Commissioner Andrews. May 17th, Commissioner Johnson?
I'm not going to be my child. My notes are with my agenda and my dog gave me homework. How about that? So they had third reading, and actually, I looked, our lovely city clerk treasurer is on vacation this week, so the minutes are not posted, so I can't tell you for sure what's passed or not, but I can tell you the business that that went for. So really, not a whole lot. They had third reading of the ordinance amending Mammell zoning map, which I believe that was proper, but maybe not. And then, I think that it was, though. The third reading of the ordinance regarding, I thought, was interesting, bill of assurance making separation to make sure that we're not governing them, which, that actually always comes up here, per se. And then, the second reading of the land use map and the zoning map, that's all tied to the property. No action. And that's coming up this May, or this, this coming regarding action on what was withdrawn not with Isabel. I think that's what he's calling it, Isabel Development.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Assignments for month June, June 7th, Commissioner Smith, and June 21st, Commissioner Fisher. Anyone else have anything in? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion? Those in paper, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Where adjourned?
Thank you.
A question for you. So if you...